In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 and Title of Open Public Meeting Act, the notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this meeting was provided on January 2014. Said notice was published in The Nutley Sun, posted at the entrance of the Board Office. Maxton Nutley Sun, the star legend of North Jersey Harold Lewis, and Nutley Journal. Maxton Nutley Township Clerk, posted on his district website. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct a regular monthly visit that would normally come before the Board of Education. Home will access will be taken. This is an official meeting. Have a pleasant reception, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of our citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Go upon, Mr. Kuzo.
Mr. Caronella.
Here.
Mrs. Davidette Martin. Mr. Farara.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Mr. Spazardo.
Mr. Kazinski.
Here. I'll have the approval of the minutes that were posted. In a second.
Say.
Thank you. Correspondence? Mr. Kuzo. Presentation, Mr. Laszlo.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinski. It's a time of year where we get honored. Some of our teachers come from every building as they've been nominated through our process and will receive recognition at their most recent faculty meeting. We have our building principals here introducing all the time, so I'll let the building principals have your honors. I'll call Mr. Caron first from the faculty school.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is one of those great nights where we get an opportunity to celebrate success within our own buildings individually. Principals work incredibly close with their staff and they put a tremendous amount of faith into what their practice is. We sit with them, we work with them every day, and tonight I have the distinct pleasure of talking about one of my best. Holly Jasnewitz, who is a kindergarten teacher at Radcliffe School, is involved in almost everything that we do. She is a member of our skip team, which decides our building goals. And I want everybody to think for just one moment about how great of an impact that has on all of our kids, our building goals. It is fused into all capacities of teaching and learning throughout the course of an entire year. And then she and the rest of her team reevaluates those goals and determines where we're going to go for the next year. That's one thing she does. Supervisor of Extended Day, sits on our INRS team, which works with some of our most needy children and some of our most gifted children. She was a faculty rep to our PTO, so always believed and has believed and has impressed upon me the need to always keep those lines of communication between home and school as everyone is a child's teacher. I can't say enough about Holly, Mrs. Jasnewitz. Every conversation that I have with her regarding kids comes back to framework and framework language and the design of having this common discussion amongst ourselves in order to know our kids, to determine outcomes for our kids, and work individually based on those children. Holly, Mrs. Jasnewitz, sorry. Please come down.
Mrs. Corolla, you have the next honor to the middle school.
Good evening. Tonight is a night when we recognize not only the teachers who go buggering beyond when they're asked to, but those who always seek out opportunities to give a little bit extra to improve their own practice, to improve the school, and really to help the entire district. And Vicki Laka is one of those teachers. She's grade chair of first grade, she's a member of our school improvement panel, helping us to establish our goals, our building goals, and insisting, finding ways to fulfill those goals. We had two different instructional rounds visits at our school and Vicki Laka participated in both and then also helped us analyze the feedback so we could use it. She's a member of our intervention and referral service team. We meet on a regular basis to determine ways that we can help our children who have academic or social needs and with her years of teaching experience, always has something to suggest, strategies and ways that she's been able to help children and she's such an asset to our team. She participated in the Tier One Language Arts Training Curriculum and she has been employing that in her classroom, but she's also turnkeyed it for the entire district higher school and set up our shared library in our school and resources that the teachers can use and gave a detailed presentation at one of our faculty meetings. So she truly believes in it and wants to help everybody in any way that she can. She piloted our new science curriculum actually last year and those of you who were here for Ken Vania's presentation featured her class and their journals that they were keeping and these are first graders and all that they were doing with the new science curriculum and it really was instrumental in making our determination that this would work for us. With the implementation of the new math curriculum this year, Vicki Laka sought out other districts that were using the Math in Focus series and actually connected with teachers to find out what strategies they've used to be successful. Even before we had iPad parts in our classrooms that the students could be using, Ms. Laka brought her own iPad and had some iPads that were donated and had her children working in groups with the iPad, so she's ahead of us on just about all of those things. She maintains a classroom webpage, communicating with parents regularly, updating assignments, providing the vocabulary, resources, ideas for extension. I know whenever I need an idea for something, I can go to Ms. Laka and she'll take out one of her many organized loose leaf binders and have something there to share with all of us. She truly is an asset to our school and I'm very proud to announce her as our Teacher of the Year.
Mrs. DeBary, if you can guard.
Good evening, everyone. There is a common theme of what we're saying tonight about all our teachers, so I'd like to share our Spring Garden School nominee, Lisa Venizia, our third grade teacher. I stand here with pride and pleasure to see Lisa and her family. Thank you for coming. It's an honor well deserved and a pleasure here. She's taken many leadership roles in our school, including again, the skip committee, coordinator of the professional development through our teacher study groups, various curriculum committee membership and also piloting committees. So thank you, Lisa. And essentially, Mrs. Venizia can be considered a lifelong learner who has taken the initiative to implement student-centered strategies in the classroom on her own because she knows they're best for students. She has embraced both the new math curriculum and Reader's Workshop model and is passionate to learn more. She's gained the respect of her colleagues, students, and parents through her sincere and warm approach and works diligently to ensure each child reaches his or her potential. In her own quiet way, Lisa truly inspires others. We know teaching is very challenging, but she finds it the most rewarding profession ever, not only a shared respect to teacher, mom, granddaughter, wife. So thank you for all you do, Lisa, and in the words of Benjamin Franklin, I thought this was appropriate for you, speak good and do much. Thank you.
Mrs. Ristow from Williamsburg.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Janine Sarno is our library media specialist at Lincoln School. She's been with us for the past nine years. Anything that I need, I want, even if I think about it, Janine's there. What do you need? What do you want? I got it. Don't worry about it. She is an active member of our building, affirmative action, PTO rep, skip team, school safety committee. She runs the video yearbook club and arranges for our sixth graders every year to do a memory of their sixth grade and Lincoln School and then burns copies for all of the children to have when they leave and it becomes part of our graduation ceremony. She is outside with the children at lunchtime, not because she has to, but because she wants to. The children love going to library. They've learned so much. I read some scholarship essays this year for this year's scholarship recipients and they talk about Mrs. Sarno and the things that they learned in the library and how they're still using it today and thank her for that, as do I. She is a valuable member of our staff and is there anytime anybody needs help. Giving up her lunch hours, going into the classrooms, certainly technology issues are not an issue in Lincoln School. And all that, and she's going to be a new mom, so I'd like to present her.
Mr. Jones from Washington School.
Good evening and thank you for coming. In 1993, a young, excited teacher entered the doors of Washington School and in our district. Mr. Kevin Smythe is a highly effective classroom teacher. He's teaching sixth grade at Washington School. He's a dedicated and skilled teacher leader who's worked for the last 21 years educating the children of Nutley. He plans to actively continue pursuing his teaching career and perfecting his craft. Mr. Smythe inspires students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn and he continues to challenge students and create lifelong learners. Mr. Smythe demonstrates leadership ability in educational activities at Washington School and in the Nutley School District. He's a member of our skips team at Washington School. He's taking a leadership role in assisting staff with various changes, developing training sessions and workshops. He's worked over the summer to assist the administration in developing a new formal teacher evaluation plan and curriculum. He also even worked on his own time to organize the school's storage and supply areas, meaning he helped clean out the closets with the science equipment that was antiquated. Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Smythe has your admiration of students, parents, and colleagues. He's well respected by the students and parents alike. He serves as the high school varsity crew coach. He's a consummate professional. In addition to all of those things, he was a former Green Ranger program coordinator for Washington School. He chairs the Read Across America for high school athletes in our district. He's involved in the character education program. Congratulations, Kevin, and we hope to see great things from you for the next 21 years.
Ms. Egan, come on in.
The Middle School Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Sarah Misner. She's a dedicated and skilled teacher who's also modest and probably dying right now, therefore I'll keep this short. She is a master teacher who challenges students of all ability levels. Not only does she have the respect of her students, but of her peers as well. Mrs. Misner is a member of the skip committee in which she shares her knowledge of teaching strategies with her peers. In addition, she is a member of the INRS committee where she works with teachers to find strategies to help all students succeed. Mrs. Misner makes learning and math fun and I am honored to work with her.
I'll be playing the role of Mr. Williams today. Mr. Williams lost his hot water heater and a number of apparently family heirlooms in the accident, so our thoughts go out to him in the heirlooms, but I have the honor of introducing Mr. Jim Kelly as the High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Kelly serves in a large number of functions for the district here. He's here every night, not normally as well dressed, but he's here with his students as you can see taping. They're working constantly throughout the district. If you check on our website or his individual webpage, he really is a model for other districts where all districts should be doing media. He takes all the hard work with teachers, such as the ones behind me, who are building toward the high school and he puts our students to work and I do think is the hallmark of a great teacher. When you walk into their classroom and the students are working tirelessly and they love every second of it, and that's completely because of the classroom that Mr. Kelly has created. He has had students go on to CNN, MSNBC, and my personal favorite ESPN. He's brought in over the last two years, I want to say about $50,000 to $60,000 alone into the district through donations and through competitions that his students' work have won. So it really is an honor to stand here and introduce Mr. Jim Kelly as the High School Teacher of the Year.
Certainly on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate all of you. You're a credit to your profession, certainly a credit to us, and it will take a few minutes for board members to say something or recognize the teachers. Mr. Riley.
I just think it's a great event. It's a credit to our staff and specifically this year alone with the tremendous undertaking we've had with the new curriculum and the tremendous amount of stress on you men and women and you've come across in a big, big way and I can't thank you enough. So thank you.
Thank you for all our efforts. I know you definitely had a lot of pressure on and we're moving in the right direction. That's all good stuff and we really appreciate everything that you do for us.
That's pressure. That's pressure when you're there.
It's pressure you can handle.
I'd like to also say thank you and you know, a lot of people talk about different things in public schools and I hope people watch our channel here, but listen to teachers like this, work with our students here. That's what it's all about and I think our students are doing very well and it's because of dedicated teachers like you. I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you seems inadequate. You were just talking about one of the teachers here that had a profound effect on my son and you're touching lives. I think sometimes we forget how often, every day, that you touch the lives of our children. Thank you.
Stand up, Riley.
We don't get many opportunities to do this, but thank you for all. Thank you. Well done. Glad to have any of you, so great job.
Mr. Brer.
I just want to echo what everyone's saying, just thank you so much for all your hard work. I know you have a lot of challenges that are on your way and it's appreciating and it's moving our district in the right direction. Thank you.
But you're not going to want to participate. Why don't we take the picture with you out? She was around by waiting to count. Thank you very much. You are the teachers that received the awards. You're willing to stay to a meeting or your setting or work with the school, but again, go celebrate your good fortune. Thank you very much. Okay. Superintendent, report, Mr. Laszlo.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinski. I think it's two names in a row now mentioning Mr. Randy Feder's name. He had donated $500 in conjunction with our work department to allow us to take kids into senior seats to experience some classical music and the event went so well and he was still looking forward to doing more, as he always is for the entire town, but not specifically the school district. He worked with Mr. Riley and donated an additional $2,000 for tickets to such events as the New Jersey Shakespeare Theater, New Jersey Symphony Orchestra, Hand Graffs, and Sculptures. We want to thank him for the donation, or the additional donation that's on the agenda tonight. Speaking of team of staff recognition, there are a couple of staff members I'd like to highlight for their recent accolades. First is Marlena Kenny. She was announced as the winner of Celebrate Teachers, which is a contest that happens in North Jersey. She's a daughter of Edward Brookmore. They recognize local teachers who show extra effort and care in the classroom. She received a mall gift card. I know Mr. Caron is still here and maybe saying her praises, she did a wonderful job. Mr. Simko at our high school was selected by State of Technology Technologies, wanted 30 teachers across the state to participate in the Cutting Edge Program, bringing next generation science standards, which Mr. Vania has been talking about for a long time now, into our high school. He's participating in two weeks, two full weeks of training, oh, the next summer and the summer of 2015. And he'll be implementing updated Cutting Edge study that's going to be his biology curriculum, becoming now just a model for our teachers both in the state, so I want to congratulate him for his selection and for that work. As well, I want to highlight Mr. J.D. Vick, part-time teacher here in the district and he's a coach at the high school, but he was honored with the 2014 Dr. Genius DiMatteo Distinguished Community Service Award for his service as both a mentor and a role model and also for the way he's brought together the students in our community around the idea of community service, both here in town, they meet frequently. He's also taken them out of state to help those who are less fortunate, so he's a model and wants to congratulate them. As an update to the board, state and local assessments, New Jersey apps three through eight, for the most part completed, and Dr. Valani from busy county test focus back in the district level and we're looking forward to getting them out of the district and sending them back to the state. The state's required biology competency test will be administered tomorrow on Wednesday, the 21st, with makeup assessments Thursday and Friday, so that'll be going on for all students in the TNA Biology Class at the high school. And just continuing with the park file, the district list selected again for end-of-year park file assessment, thanks to Mr. Vee and my teammates, Matty, Mr. Levine, Dr. Valani, all the principals and member of our teaching staff for getting these ready. We will be, like when we begin, the end-of-year assessment may fit and it goes all the way through June and six, depending on difficulties. Moving on to student recognition, students who are applying to perform in our program were awarded first place and second place in digital graphic arts and congressional art exhibition. Our students outperformed 20 other high-ranking high schools, including Montclair, Del Barden, and Chatham to make a few. For fine arts, Alex Bochore, grade 12, will be invited to Washington, D.C. this June. He will have his work, which is set up Brooklyn Park, displayed for one year in the Capitol Building in digital photography. Laura Sitchem, grade 12 as well, took second place with photographs titled "Oil and Water", and they were both honored. So congratulations to them and to our digital teachers. At the Essex County Scholar Dinner, which attended by Mr. Williams and Ms. Devilia, two of our high school students were recognized for academic excellence. Those two were Melissa Holla, and Grace and Camila, so congratulations to those two students. I had the honor and sheer pleasure, along with Mr. Scolera, of attending the Choral Performance past Thursday. It was absolutely fantastic as it always is and just I wrote separate letters to the teachers because of their efforts all year long, which I'm sure everyone will thank them. Mr. Scolera and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Riley, our coordinator, and I attended both the Friends of Nutley Singers meeting recently and the Nutley Music Boosters. I was there and spoke with all the parents who were there about what's going on with the program, our timelines, and again, what has been happening with the middle school to ensure that our music program sustains and grows as we go through a number of other curriculum shifts. We had some really good questions and some good conversation that I didn't realize we had, that we spoke for about an hour, which ended up being good and answered a lot of questions and a lot of feedback, so I'm trying to communicate as we talk about. Speaking of communication, I think Ms. Egan left, but we had our middle school PTO meeting, which basically turned into a conversation. We had about 15 administrators there present, parents who had asked all school manner of questions about what's going on at the middle school. We had a large number of teachers turn out for the PTO meeting, which was great for the middle school. And between the teachers, the administrators, and parents, we had an ongoing conversation that was facilitated by Ms. Egan for again about an hour and a half to two hours. And I just want to thank everyone for participating in that and it helps us get the right information out. Speaking of our teaching plan and getting information out, our communications action team, charged with making sure that the right information is getting out and going into the right people at the right time, they had a second Nutley Parent Academy, which was a park information session. Ms. Levine, Ms. Matta, and Mr. Williams together presented on information, including what the park assessments are, how they relate to the Common Core. They went through the Common Core to give parents a better understanding. I know Mr. Caronella was an attendance at the meeting and we hope to have more of those who out as we go along, basically trying to answer questions publicly that we're finding people are having across the district. Updated kindergarten totals again for the board were placed in board brief and again the numbers continue to grow. Just as professionals, but I want to update, our ESL more languages are still going through the paddling process, new teaching curriculum, examining instruction and the common assessments for the 14, 15 school year. Mr. Materia met with all of our one world language teachers to complete planning to make sure we're prepared in one of the summer and for next September and are reconvening the pilot committee to decide on the program's implementation for 14, 15, including the purchase of materials. Language arts, Dr. Valani, he's used to work with our elementary principals and middle school principal, the language registering specialist, and apparently in banking case with her, working with, within a conjunction of ALPT and what feedback we receive from the teachers as well as our strategic plan, what dates we will have before, what her purpose will be in year three of this work. And again, science, just as a reminder, during the second week of June, kindergarten teachers as well as all teachers, grades six to eight, are going to participate in a full day of science sharing of the materials, much to do with the training that happened for the other elementary teachers. Again, Mr. Van is doing one of the jobs of blowing this out and really just increasing the rigor and the excitement, sort of, for these students when it comes to science instruction. I know Mr. Kazinski, Mr. Riley, Mr. Jones, who was here, and Ms. Neiman's, who are Mr. Nicoletta, I believe, and all the problems, conversations around the safety, work being done hopefully over the summer in conjunction with Mr. Spark Valley Department of Public Works. I know Mr. Farara has been playing a lot for all, wearing two hats on this one, but ensuring that we can use some of that back money that Department of Public Works is to make our schools a little bit safer, so thank you, Matt. The Nutley Youth Survey, which has been an ongoing developmental task, is scheduled to go out, including high school students during the week of June 7. Today, approximately 200 students are scheduled to participate in the survey. The school has reached out numerous times to the parents to make sure they're informed and that the survey gives us the information that we need, which is again, more on the social, emotional side of what's going on with our students here, so we can better start their needs. Excited to talk about the district art show. Every year this happens, it's scheduled for May 21st, which is Wednesday. The art will be displayed in the high school. Students K through 12 with technology students on hand, drive demonstrations of their work. And all grades six students and all those will visit the display at the high school to view their work and learn about opportunities in art as they move into the middle. to view their work and learn about opportunities in art as they move into the middle of the high school, so that's always an exciting time. Dr. Valani and I, actually, this is a brief again, but we were invited by the Essex County Prosecutor to participate as one of four districts in Essex County, to work collaboratively with law enforcement to come up with a common set of practices for emergency response. Their number-one concern is that, in a state of a true emergency, Nutley may not be the only departments responding to our schools. And if we, if Bellevue trains differently than Nutley doesn't go, the police end up at Washington School because they're the first on strike. If they don't know our protocols, it could make a bad situation worse. So we've been working together, we've got about thirty people from across the county that were at the initial meeting, to develop some consistent protocols so that, should that happen, we're prepared. This is supposed to be in my office, so the prosecutor says we should be prepared for other counties to follow. Moore's County's already done this, we're following in their footsteps, but the idea being that Clinton is just as close to nothing as Bellevue is, so Nutley, again, it's in a different county. So county-wide is a good first step, but we're looking to make sure that we're consistently safe across, so that we can act together in a coordinated fashion, sure they're actually in an emergency. Want to update the board and the public again. I've worked with Commissioner Evans's office, and he has talked us about the paperwork and banking, and Mr. Scolera and Ms. Danjik Martin, all the work we've done trying to relocate polling places. Four of the five elementary buildings will be relocated for the primary, for the general election in coming November. So this will be the last time, I'm told by Commissioner Evans, that we will have to have elections in the buildings. As always, Dr. Valani's headed up with Ms. Merritt. A good deal of work to make sure that we're running all the extra security protocols that we have over the past year and a half, two years. And again, there's a resolution on the agenda to approve the payment for such to the extra police officers that we have present. And again, thanks to the mayor and Department of Public Safety for helping us with that. Without going into too much more detail, our strategic plan is coming to a conclusion for year two. There'll be a presentation on both common vision and common language, as there is every year, at the next board meeting. Other than that, upcoming dates, we talked about assessments. Junior Olympics, supposed to be clear, October 12th, scheduled for May 22nd, or the rainy of the 23rd. Our all elementary showcase is May 21st. Senior Scholastic Awards, June 10th, Tuesday at high school. And middle school commencement, we are already saying, C word commencement, scheduled for 24th, we will be doing. Again, if parents or anyone have questions about kindergarten, sixth grade, any of the commencement procedures, et cetera, please see our website under calendar, and then just click on the 2013, 2014 graduation calendar. Mr. Kazinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Laszlo. This time, I'll take committee reports. Mr. Concello, Justice Scolera.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. The administrative report on the administration committee was held May 15th. We met with Mr. Pyro, we got a new flight update. DSCC, which is the sports section, and Mr. Pyro has been president, they instituted new protocols for the football, this upcoming football season. They instituted a non-contact period for all sports over the summer. There's going to be a nine-day period where no sports can happen at all during the summer going into the fall season, where the students have to have a nine mandatory day break, that's been adopted by all schools in NUC. There's also going to be a limit during football season, in training, of ninety minutes of contact during the week. So during the practice all week long, they cannot exceed ninety minutes of contact practice. Also, the coaches are being trained, and it's called a, it's called a heads-up for coaches, concussion awareness, heads-up tackling, player safety coach, equipment fitting, and heat and hydration. Also, this year, we'll have summer camps that are going to be run by the coaches independently. They're going to run the camps for all different sports as the summer moves along. We also are reviewing a policy on booster clubs and guidance and interaction, which the board will be reviewing. Mr. Pyro is finishing the evaluation of all the coaches using the district's new framework. We then went from there to a technology update. The township is, you know, is creating fiber in the town, which is going to connect all of our schools, which is going to save us money, so the work connecting to the fiber in the township is installing for free, and they're sharing services, and will be saving money in the following year forward. We're working also on our digital readiness for learning assessment, and we reviewed the plan by the Department of Education. Also, we reviewed the security and handheld wireless bid that we will be hopefully approving at the next board meeting. There was a security meeting held, a district update between Ms. Levine, Mr. Meister, Mr. Pyro, Mr. Nicoletti, Dr. Valani, Mr. Laszlo, and we're in issue planning of the new security in the buildings. The reregistration process, we have a meeting on that. At the admin meeting, talking about some of it may be able to be done electronically, that's still be reviewed by the committee. We also put on our technology purchases, with our three-year fresh, refresh cycle, and meet our sustainability for the new equipment. We're going to be purchasing some new Google Chromebooks, so that the kids are not only learning from iPads, but also another form of Google Chrome, Google Box, so that they're more prepared as they're moving forward. And between all those devices, originally it was going to take us two weeks to do the park assessment. With all these purchased, we'll be able to do the park assessment in one week instead of losing two weeks of education. So now, I have enough devices to cut that short. The government allowed for, the state allows for you to do park over two weeks, but you really screwed up education for two weeks, so now we're going to be doing over a whole week with all new equipment. The reconstruction, the security project going forward at Lincoln School, discussion on the school bleachers, three to four plans we've been discussing. The strategic plan, we covered the competency, configuration, and the communications plans we discussed. Personnel and policy that are on your agendas tonight, we'll also discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, Mr. Pyro. I have two committees to report on, I'll be brief. Academic Committee, we had on May 12th. We heard presentations from the critical committee, discussing year-two's goals, as well as moving forward, years three and four. Got a fire safety house program update, which will be coming towards some of our schools next year. The Nutley youth survey, which Mr. Laszlo explained about. Heard from the world language pilot program update, as well, we discussed the language arts professional development, see if they're sent for next year. And then a couple of agenda items, some internships, and three-year bilingual program, and the science purchases. That was academics. Now, the PAG Committee, the Special Parents Advocacy Group, several agenda items, discussed special Olympics, park updates. The Marlena Kennedy, we discussed Mr. Laszlo's book about how she was the Celebrate Teacher award recipient. Discussed the dyslexia bill guidelines for next year, preschool transition update. And then, on June 4th, in lieu of our final meeting, we're going to have a viewing of the film, The Big Picture. It's going to be Nutley Public Schools, as well as Bellevue Public Schools at the John Walker Road Theater. It's The Big Picture, it's a film about dyslexia, so to kind of help transition the district towards the new dyslexia bill. So it's open, open to the public, staff, as well as students.
Thank you. Anyone else with you, Mr. Pyro?
The finance committee met on May 12th, and went over agenda resolutions, including transfers, contract awards, and the 2007 Fundry Project transfers. We also reviewed salary range for new hires, options for leachery repairs versus replacement, health insurance dependent options, and a new website for healthcare, with which the teachers of the school always could use to help them select between the different plans. The committee also discussed possible sites for parking the school buses. And we also had a special guest, which was Commissioner Evans, who provided an explanation on the transitional aid that the town has received from the state to help offset the tax dash from the half of the road site. Commissioner Evans discussed how the aid is being split between all of the taxing authorities, the town, the school district, and the county. And it's also on our understanding that traditional aid is on a multi-year provision, meaning it's not guaranteed, and that every year, the town has to go back to the state, and it has to be waiting for approval from the state budget committee. And it's just a fact that that's going to be a three- to five-year transition period.
Thank you. Anyone else? And now comes the portion of our meeting where we allow the members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation, six oh one, allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all those who wish to speak on a topic ever near. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember, please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. The first person may step forward. Thank you. Resolutions, academic, yes, I, you know, take that by the head. Thank you.
Mr. President, I ruled academic resolutions one through five written. Start it again.
Discussion. Local, please.
Mr. Concello.
Yes.
Mr. Coraro.
Yes.
Mr. Fly.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes. Mr. Scolera, we take administration, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. I move Administration Resolutions one through three as written.
Second.
Discussion. Local, please.
Mr. Concello.
Yes.
Mr. Coraro.
Yes.
Mr. Fly.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Sussa.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes. Mr. Coraro, you take finance, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I read the resolutions, one through nine, two as written.
Your second.
Second.
Local.
Mr. Concello.
Yes, one through five, number six, you guys seven or nineteen.
Mr. Coraro.
Yes.
Mr. Fly.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
No, on number six, yes, I'm a valid.
Mr. Sussa.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes. Mr. Concello, you take personal resolution, please.
Uh, the review of personal resolution, one through, as written.
Local.
Mr. Concello.
I like that statement, on personnel.
Mr. Coraro. You always say.
I'm going to say on one, yes, or two.
Mr. Fly.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Sussa.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me, and we wish to speak about any school-related ideas that are going on right now.
I just wanted to ask again about the middle school elected, the loss of the one elected, and here, inquiring again about whether or not there would be a possible zero period or that period, if they're not elected, you know, it's affecting the music program, and you know, that's my concern.
Sure. As we say, kind of in that meeting, which you're likely to be part of, we, at my understanding, talking to the secret seminar, and it's most of our seventh going to eighth base students request coming in finalized, we should have the numbers shortened, I'm going to answer them again. Our goal is to, in whatever manner possible, make sure that we, if we don't lose those students who didn't call between two meetings.
Okay, so, there's going to be some kind of...
We have the numbers, and I can give you specific answers. Now, we have the language, we're simply going to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Hello, I'm a parent at Lincoln Middle School.
Name and address, please.
My name is Lena Whitefeish, of the Lincoln Essex County. I'm a parent at Lincoln, and we have a committee of parents at Lincoln. We are grieved and angry with the BOE for the, we were told that there was an involuntary transfer of our fourth-grade teacher, Mr. Ferriell, removing him to Radford. Now, we're upset about this because he's a wonderful pillar of our family and we can come to his school. He is one of the rare male figures, and not every child in the school has a father figure. He's also their father figure, many of them. He's very active, all day in school. Some of us parents were there until four o'clock, because he still told me some of them and gave me extra guidance. I can't be here all night, some people have these great qualities, but many of the parents that cannot be here are also very upset. And I think that it makes us parents feel like, well, we're all the teachers that are there, but also great with him. He's not just a regular teacher, that's a good teacher, many of the Lincoln teachers are wonderful. Mr. Ferriell stands out. When we started this school year, we were a new public school, and he met my son in the summertime, we took him to school, he took us in the classroom, told us all the great things about Lincoln and Nutley Public School systems. He is exceptional. My child had ADHD, he didn't know that, he had no records on him, and he, without a five or four plan, brought my son, who was struggling, up to high honors. I see him with other parents, he has a just kind of friendly demeanor, he's very caring and emphatic, he's very loving, he knows almost everyone in that school on a first-name basis. To lose Mr. Ferriell would be, I don't even have the words to say, it would be tragic. It really, I find it, I don't want to offend anyone or put anyone down here, I don't know personally, but as parents, it's really sad. We should not be losing our teachers like this. I don't understand, in any position, how to voluntarily transfer someone who does not want to leave the position without the permission. I mean, it's really, it's disownable, and...
My name is Jason Scannick, my address is forty-six Girard Road, I have three children at the Lincoln School. My son had Mr. Ferriell last year. My daughter, who is a special education student, also interactive, but I certainly have a hard act to top, but my sentiments precisely, but I, and I feel very strongly that the decision should be reconsidered, which is a risk asset. And my children are very critical kids, and I've never seen them take to a teacher like that. So it would be a tremendous loss, and it doesn't seem to be something that would be in the best interest from our perspective anyway, so keep expecting, request that there be some further consideration.
Jeff Dieterly, Thirty-Chase Street.
Laurie Dieterly, Thirty-Chase Street. Before I read my written statement, we're also here on behalf of Mr. Ferriell, and this is how important it is to us personally. Our son is senior, four-year member of the award-winning jazz band, is performing at Trumpets right now. We're here. We're going to see the end of it, but we're here now, not seeing his whole show. That's how important Mr. Ferriell is. I did send a letter to Mr. Laszlo, who did reply to me, thank you. Mr. Kazinsky, I sent it to you, Mrs. Sussa, Mr. Scolera. Never get my emails. I'll resend it. I'm going to read it now. We have been parents in the Nutley School District for thirteen years. In fact, we have been Lincoln School parents all thirteen years, and we still have two more to go. We recently learned of Mr. Ken Ferriell's involuntary transfer to another school in the district. We are extremely dismayed at the thought of a devoted, engaging, and strong teacher being removed from Lincoln School. To say that Mr. Ferriell is an asset to Lincoln is an understatement. He is the epitome of what you, as an administrator, would want in a teacher at Lincoln. He never hesitates to help and guide a child, and will gladly give up personal time to do just so. He comes in early, stays late to plan, prepare, and makes sure he is always ready for what the day holds. Our son Roger has the honor of having Mr. Ferriell as a fourth-grade teacher this year. Roger has had wonderful, wonderful teachers at Lincoln, all our children did, but we must say, this year has been exceptional. Roger comes home and raves about all his learning in science, history, math, and so much more. That is because of Mr. Ferriell. Our son has always struggled with reading, not a favorite subject of his. With guidance and encouragement from Mr. Ferriell, Roger has completed his first chapter book on his own. Not only was Roger proud of himself, but when Mr. Ferriell called to tell us of this achievement, we could hear the pride in his voice. Very rarely do parents get the good call. Very rarely do parents get the good call. Mr. Ferriello made that good call to us. Our son Brian, a sophomore, was in Mr. Ferriello's math class in sixth grade. Brian found his strength in math because of Mr. Ferriello. Brian is always referring to his school days with Mr. Ferriello, and has told Roger on many occasions just how lucky he is to have him as a teacher. Please, do not take away this amazing teacher from the future students of Lincoln. They deserve the same education my children have received. I implore, we implore the Board of Education, that when the time comes to please vote no to a transfer of Mr. Ferriello out of Lincoln School.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellen Burns, I'm at Two-Ten Cross Street, in Nutley, and I'm also here on behalf of Mr. Ferriello. I prepared this statement so I wouldn't talk for too long, so it's very specific and direct. We started tonight talking about great teachers touching children's lives, and I'm here to talk about Mr. Ferriello. He taught my son, and I may get emotional here, because he had a tremendous impact on my son. When I was in fifth grade at Lincoln, he had Mr. Ferriello. He went through the Nutley School system, he went on to that V F A sculpture in college, and now he has a job where he is making, designing, and building furniture for New York City architects, private clients, and retailers like Chanel, Louis Vuitton. This job requires incredible precision and creativity, and if it weren't for Mr. Ferriello seeing something about my son, he would not have the job he has now, and he would not be succeeding. Because my son had absence seizures when he was in school, and he went all through school till the fifth grade before somebody diagnosed this, and it was Mr. Ferriello. And it really made an impression on us, because you can't imagine what it was like for us as parents, not knowing what was wrong with this child, except every night we had to reteach everything that was going on in school every year. He couldn't retain anything. He couldn't carry on a conversation, he had no friends. Can you imagine? He couldn't play ball, he couldn't focus long enough to hit a baseball. So he went through his, all those years of school with no one recognizing this, we didn't know what was wrong, but no teacher saw this until Mr. Ferriello. And he called us and said, "There's something, there's something wrong, you should see a neurologist." Up until that point, no one had said that to us, and we went to different doctors, and we tried to figure out what was wrong, but no one said that word, that there's something neurologically that might be wrong here. And I thought that was really going out on a limb for this teacher that made that statement, that it was his observation, his careful observation of this child, and he realized it wasn't just bored, spaced out, not paying attention, being disrespectful to the teacher, there was something wrong. And when he was finally diagnosed, see, I'm not reading this, when he was finally diagnosed, he had so many seizures in a half an hour, that the neurologist put him in a medical journal, because she had never seen a child with so many seizures in such a short amount of time. Now, as a result of Mr. Ferriello, his diagnosis, he went on Ziratan, he went on to make the honor of a middle school, he went on to be successful in nothing high, and so on, but it was Mr. Ferriello throwing out on a limb and seeing that no one else saw all those years, and I'm saying, this man is really something. He is important to that school. He is a strong male figure in that school, and he, he shows little boys that it's okay to be a man with feeling and compassion and caring, and it's okay to express your emotions. This is so important for young boys to see. He's been there eighteen years, our family has a few more years, so I can't imagine why you would transfer him now, at the end of his career, when he makes such a difference in that school. Thank you for listening.
My name's Catherine La Lama, I live at Seventy Cross Street in Nutley. Um, I grew up in Nutley my entire life. I graduated from Lincoln High School two years ago, two thousand and twelve, where I was very successful in academics, was a National Arts Society, Valley Arts Society, went on to King University, where I started my third year, and I'm going to be an educator when I graduate, and I know that because of Mr. Ferriello. I had him as a sixth-grade teacher when I graduated Lincoln School in two thousand and six. Without him in my life, it would never have been the same. I lost my father at a young age on September eleventh, and I never was able to have a father figure in my life, and I'm really sorry. Um, and he was that person for me. He gave me hope, he showed me that I can do anything that I set my mind to, and that I am a smart and determined individual. I struggled with school after my father passed away. I was at Capus School for the early years of my education. My mom moved me into Lincoln School, because that's where the district of Nutley were at, and I had many educators through Lincoln School, some who are here tonight, who have helped me, but there was no one like Mr. Ferriello, who showed me that what I can do is important. I still see him, to this day, I go back and visit, because he likes to see the progress that I had, I am making in my years of education, and I hope that when I become an educator, I am more than half the teacher that he is, because he has taught me so many life lessons. I struggled in math, and he's the person that helped me perfect it, and I am very well at it now. He taught me that history is important, and I am a history education major, it is my path, it's one of my passions, and I want to do what he does, I want to make, I want to change his lives for the better, and teach them, and let them know that they are important to the world, and that they can do anything they set their minds to, and that history is a part of every day. He taught me that those who don't learn history are going to repeat it, and I followed that statement till now, and no matter what the decision is, his heart and soul is with Lincoln School. He's been there for eighteen years, and he should finish his career there for the rest of, until he is ready to retire. He had, majority of my school memories are in his classroom. The lessons that I've learned of different historical events are amazing, and I still remember them to this day, and when I look back on my education, I look back at my sixth grade class with Mr. Ferriello.
Hello, Audrey Chavez, winning five, we have you. Um, and also here for Mr. Ferriello. Um, as you can see, he's a huge asset to our school. We have three male teachers, gym teacher, a special teacher, and Mr. Ferriello. My daughter, who is now a freshman, and my son, who's in sixth grade, so I don't have to be here, he's leaving. I just felt that I needed to tell you that, I was worried when my daughter was going to, um, fifth grade, because Mr. Ferriello was a male, she was a female, how is this going to work, she's growing up. I could not believe, out of every teacher in the school, the one she took to the most was Mr. Ferriello. Um, this man came in early when she needed help, stayed late, he is part of the before-and-after cap program. I ran the talent show for ten years, every talent show, he was there. He just, there are a couple of teachers that stand out at Lincoln, and he is one of them. And I'm just afraid at this point that we have no male teachers, why are we going to remove him? And take him out of the school, that these kids really, we really need a teacher like this. And Mrs. Sornum, I mean, she stands out, and there are quite, you know, a couple here and there, I'm not gonna say all of them, there are a couple. He is one of them. Um, and, you know, I just hope that every child can have a little bit of a Mr. Ferriello, and gain what my children gained from him, and I hope you reconsider moving Mr. Ferriello. We really could use him and keep him at Lincoln School. Thank you.
St. Paul, fifty-three Lakeside Drive, that's the neighborhood we used to pass. I have two quick, um, issues to raise. Um, the residency requirements, is there anything being done regarding out-of-district placements to ensure that these students are in fact Nutley residents?
Out-of-district place students that are ours?
Yes.
Well, we're running, as Mr. Kaczynski mentioned before, we actually have members of the board, Mr. Ferrara, Mr. Riley, Mr. Carnicello, have been kind of working with us. We've been trying to process to re-register everyone in the district between now and September. It's a massive undertaking, but, uh, so, not we're not targeting out-of-district or special ed or general, we're looking to re-register everyone with a number of our administrators, Mr. B. Meister, Mr. Levine. Mr. B. Meister, in particular, actually came up with an online method that we, had seen some other districts use, which brings the cost down, makes it far easier for parents. So after we do this one time, kind of re-registering everyone, we can then spot check around the district, the fair little cost. So it's something we're looking to right now.
Yeah, I know.
We are the chairman of the board, and that's why, along with Mr. Ferrara and the Board of Education, Mr. Ferrara, Mr. Sornum, Mr. Carnicello, are working with them to maybe bring some more input, technology-wise, input from the town of Nutley on better record keeping, so that we can get a clearer picture of residents.
I love it, thank you. The, um, second issue I want to raise is regarding inclusion. For the past year and a half, I've been asking the superintendent and the board if the district has been providing training to the general ed teachers for the included special education students, and the answer has always been no. Um, the district is now non-compliant for receiving Part B funds from the federal government. In accordance to N J A C one point two, district eligibility under I T P A Part B funds, they're supposed to ensure that the in-service training is integrated to the maximum extent possible with other professional development activities, provide for joint training activities of parents and special education-related services and general education personnel, and with this report of education, it shall maintain information in its efforts to prepare general and special education personnel with content knowledge and collaborative skills needed to meet the needs of children with disabilities. N P N, Nutley C P A, in collaboration with our Public Affairs Health Department, which is run by Commissioner Steve Rogers, has offered to provide training for free. These general ed teachers are forced to fly by the seat of their pants, they're both teachers without any support. This basically is educational neglect, and we're curious to see if in fact, in the upcoming school year, if you are going to be open to allowing our, um, collaborative effort with the Public Affairs Department to provide training to the teachers, or if in fact you have a plan to do it yourself, because at this juncture, it is part of the requirements for, for receiving Part B funds from the federal government, and to my knowledge, we're not doing that. If I'm incorrect, please, you know, let me know.
As far as our compliance, we received our most recent letter from the state, we're fully compliant now. Um, as far as professional development, next year, we're mapping it up, as I've told you every time, I completely agree, that we need to train our teachers in a number of things, they genuinely ask for it. Um, we only have limited time to do some, and we split in a number of different ways and catch up. That being said, we partner, ask, and we're offering things to you, we lie to Commissioner Rogers, please come to talk to me about making that focus, so teachers have access and appreciate that we do that, and we're trying to find more and greater ways to make sure our teachers are as prepared as possible for every situation.
Well, we are, we are completely compliant, and we do our required training, maybe not through your association, but the training is done by us, but again, we've talked to Commissioner Rogers in order to work with you to help, and maybe, and, you know, we might be compliant.
We need to get it sorted, I mean...
You know, compliance is not our final goal, compliance is the baseline. We want to make sure we're compliant, but then we want to do that.
Right. Now, that would be fantastic, but, you know, the reality is, is that, you know, we could fudge the information that you give to the government in order to be compliant. Clearly, if you're not providing training to general ed teachers, they have no clue how to handle special ed kids. What if they have a kid that, you know, has autism and runs out of the class every five minutes? What does that teacher do? You know, so, I just want to make sure that we are truly compliant, and as you said, that is the baseline, but we really need, you can't say that we're really a special ed-friendly district without having general ed teachers have the knowledge and the ability to provide these types of services, and it's really not fair to them to have to deal with children that they have not been trained on working with.
I don't think we would put ourselves in that situation, and certainly when the, when the state, we don't, we didn't, and when the state inspects us, we are compliant to what the state requires us to be. Again, it might not be part of what your training that you would like us to participate in.
I can train general ed teachers, not special ed students.
Yes, ma'am.
When?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, but obviously, they need to be trained, and they have to, and they will continue to be.
Will somebody provide me a list of the professional development that has occurred for the general ed teachers?
I'm sure we can.
When can I expect that report?
Um, by next month.
Thank you.
Terry Kirk, Forty-Five Hundred Place, spokesperson for N P N, I'm a parent of a senior board. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, if a five or four plan is not in place, or there's a conflict between parents and the district, what exactly are the grievance procedures, and are they up on the website in regards to how to, for the parents to know how to proceed if they're at certain levels with the five or four process?
Should be part of our policy.
Okay, is, okay, is it up on the website?
All of our policies are approved, right?
Okay, so are parents, if they do know that there's a grievance procedure, if they're not, if they're not in agreement with the district, do they know to go to the next step? Are they given that information?
I don't know, but what should happen is if during any of our processes, if we don't come to some kind of agreement, it should be made clear what the next steps are on both sides, so that they don't have to go digging through our policies, they know, and again, we're trying to work together, if they can't agree on something, doesn't mean the conversation should stop.
Okay. Um, are there any new electives in the high school for the, uh, the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year that you know of? Any new electives, any new art classes, or any new music classes, anything that you know of?
Different, different, they're working out.
Yeah, that, that, what we have now, is there any changes to run?
We have a new vocal class that they're offering.
There isn't, okay, it's in the syllabus, it's in the...
Program studies.
Yes, program studies.
We've been talking about for two years at this point, trying to get that course up and running issues with staffing.
Okay. Do you expect that to happen for September?
Yes, only Mr. Rogers, one of the things we're trying to attack for this September.
Okay, so how are students going to be scheduled in for that particular class?
My understanding is that when they met with counselors, it was discussed for students who are interested in vocal music, but not necessarily the audition-based classes.
Okay, okay. Um, I just have, I'd like to get some information about, um, something that came to my attention, it's called instructional rounds. I remember, Mr. Lazovic, you had said something about this, not last year, but the year before, that you were going to be doing this, and I really didn't understand what it was at that point, but I just got some feedback, that there's people that are walking into a classroom, and they're there for maybe like ten minutes, and they're asking questions of the students while the teacher is teaching. I, if you could just clarify exactly what goes on during this.
We've given, I mean, I think in center presentations, we've been talking about, as you said, instructional rounds, the first year. It's a practice that districts engage in across the state, we implemented internally. It's a learning factor for our teachers, you know, teachers from different buildings coming to a new building and visiting for a purpose, and that purpose is set by the teachers in that building. And the, those teachers will introduce the teachers to what they've been working on, what they're hoping to see in classrooms, and then those teachers go around and basically gather evidence as third-party impartial observers, and then they present that evidence back to the host teachers that take it to the entire faculty as to, basically it's a self-monitoring process, where they go in classrooms and gather, and, uh, there are four areas that we look in. We look at the teacher, we look at the environment, we look at the student, for sure, so that's where they learn to talk, the students will come and see work, and they present all of those areas, so that the host school can kind of, during the year, make sure that they're monitoring their progress toward their building goals.
So do these instructional rounds happen again in the same class, or do those?
Every building has a different depending on the building. The building leadership teams are in charge of that. And ideally, what should happen is that, I think every building, I think, did host two sets of rounds. And so basically something in the early part of the year and something in the later part of the year to see if they're making progress. For too long, we were setting goals and then not checking them until June. And recognizing we checked them in November, we could have made some recalibration, you know, and in June better than we ended up making. So that's, that's there. And also, though, provides an incredible way to, for our teachers who are going to other classrooms to get out and see, to try to dive. When we, when we implemented and designed the process, it was with our teachers, and we took feedback from every time we did a visit. And two pieces of feedback that we got from the teachers overwhelmingly were that we need more teachers involved in rounds to get out and see more in classrooms, and we need to do more of them.
Do you do rounds in special ed classrooms?
Again, depending on, depending on the school and the focus within that school, it absolutely is possible.
Okay, okay, okay.
Was there a problem with?
No, 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 I just wanted to know because I remember a couple of years ago, and then it, there was, no, it wasn't really a problem. I was just kind of confused as how the, the, if there's data that's being taken, if it's collected, is it, is it written down, are there reports, or?
There's initial data that's written down by the people who go in. We go through, there's a huge amount of anonymity in this. They collect their notes in groups, and they create what we call feedback charts. They're stolen for the teachers, to classrooms, to students, et cetera. It's more about data that the building asked them to look for. And all the individual notes are actually shredded at the end of the day. So there's nothing kept on teachers, there's nothing kept on students.
I sent an email to all of you a few days ago, and I do appreciate your, your answer. But it seems to be a problem that's affecting more children, and it's come to my attention. So if you can, please look at that policy again and see if there could be any exception to it. If there's something, you can need to sit down with us. We'd be more than happy to sit down and discuss our concerns. But, you know, it's something that seems to be rare because we had in regards to, you know, children not having the ability to sit and hear a lecture and take notes and be able to, to do, be successful in it. So that's something that, you know, if, if you could please.
Just clarify again, I know I've gone with the board, this is one of those things where, what I meant by not being board issues, the policy is not the issue. The issue is the implementation at a administrative level. Which is why we can have a conversation about individual students. And it is rearing itself ahead of multiple students, which we have in conversations about with students. But the policy does allow for exception.
Oh, it does?
Based on individual cases.
Because I thought it was an electronic, considered an electronic device.
It is, when you refresh it, I want to get into conversation here as to why this is really, but to talk about specific students, if you're advocating for someone, it shouldn't actually have to advocate. My concern was the information that was or was not conveyed during the specific meeting. And again, all of this happens at the administrative level below. This is certainly something we can have discussions about because, as you mentioned in your email, there are districts that, and listen, as technology improves and we understand learning better, there are going to be, you know, students who need different tools. We can have policies that completely prohibit those, and we don't. And we have to handle a lot of things with these students.
And I think that's the point we're trying to make. The policy is there. It is a little flexible because that's the way we want, that's the way the state wants it. So certainly, your concerns are valid. Talking to the administration would resolve them a lot quicker.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just clarify the program of studies, what, sort of, to address your question? We update the program of studies in the fall and then present it to the board usually in October, November. We go through our program reviews. You remember, we presented science and health in December. Based upon that discussion within the department, there are updates to the program of studies which will be presented to the board in June for middle school and high schools. So an updated document will be presented, approved, and then on the website as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Me again. I am Paul from 53 Lakeside Drive. Regarding educational rounds, which I really don't know anything about, but I just have a parent who has a question, a couple of questions. Regarding the people that are doing the educational rounds, are they fingerprinted? Is there a criminal background check? And for those who are in special ed classes, do they get parental consent?
There are teachers.
There are our own teachers.
Oh, own teachers.
So they're administrative, so.
Okay, so does nobody from the outside coming in, basically?
There was initially to help start us.
Okay.
But the whole purpose was that this was an internal process, kind of, we.
Okay, and then what about the parental consent for kids in special ed?
We don't look at the parental consent, we're not actually observing the students. Depending on where we go, we've never tried to interfere with the environment.
They're more looking at the makeup of the room and the way the program is taught rather than the teacher and the students, et cetera.
And you mentioned professional development for general classrooms. And what classroom teachers and what we've been doing is trying to get teachers out of their known environment into some of the environments that exist. It's interesting having a special teacher in kindergarten class and a secondary teacher in a 10th grade biology class.
Okay, so in other words, you're just taking in-house teachers and just kind of mix, and they're doing?
Mrs. Coroll, with her leadership team, looks at their building goals and says, you know, we want to have a visit about here because that will give our teachers time to implement some of the things we're working on as a building. So she sends an email off to the principals, who spread it to their staff. They get volunteers from the other six buildings. And they come and they spend it, basically one day, they're in classrooms for a brief minute. Again, it's, if they're in there 10 minutes, it's actually too long to live around that. They're there for a specific focus. They go in, they collect data, and we're trying to restrain ourselves to think this way so we can really recognize what's going on in the classroom quickly and make adjustments as teachers. This is kind of a practice, they've spent a good proportion of time compiling the data. As I said, so everything is anonymous, the building has meaningful data on their goals. And then they make those presentations, and then the teachers from the host building kind of go through the data stream on what they want to do and how they present it to their staff. They don't speak that data separately, we talk about it as a faculty. The other teachers who are visiting, again, even if you're with teachers from other buildings that you may or may not know, they kind of agree on their experiences and how it's developed and what they can use from their experience when they go back to their classroom.
That's interesting, I like that. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else with the urgent?
I'm going, I'm going, but one more question. Right 832 East Street. Another subject, I was at baseball, and Mom said to me, "Oh, did you hear graduations inside this year because of the bleachers?" Is that true?
Let me answer publicly now. How the bleachers got to the state, we can't talk about it. This board, this administration, we've been working to try and solve the problem there. There are three basically three separate plans the board is looking at, short-term, medium-term, long-term. We need to make a determination. Once the determination is made, move as quickly as possible without impact to the use of the bleachers. One of the things we've been looking at long-term was trying to get in as soon as baseball season was over and before football season began, and complete all that work, which would mean that graduation would be inside because we would not have access to the bleachers. If we are not working with board, Mr. Niglet, I kind of surveying the bleachers, they're no worse than they have been in previous years. While that's not good, it's still no worse than they've been in previous years. In fact, we try to make the best attempt to try to make them a little bit more comfortable. If we are not doing construction, it's something I need to talk to Ms. Eve and Mr. Holmes about in conflict with the board. So there is a possibility. But the idea was to move as quickly as possible so the impact is few as possible.
Okay, so there's nothing final?
Not yet.
After I just heard it, I was here tonight, so I'd ask.
It's one of the options we're looking at. Hopefully, we don't have to go that way, but it is an option.
Because once word does get out. All right, thank you for your time, for everything.
I appreciate you being here. I don't need to go.
We're on the table.
But I appreciate all the parents and teachers being here in support of your fellow teacher. And it is something we as a board have been talking about, and it'll still be continued, we talk.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters in example public discussion pursuant to NJSA count four day twelve. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education resets the closed executive session at this time to discuss duty matters. Be further resolved that the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subject meeting of the Board of Education or whether reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. All others approve?
Aye.
Thank you.